All right, good evening to everyone. Show the time is six thirty-two on nine seventeen twenty twenty-four. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call, all council members are present with the exception of council member Shelton, who will not be joining us tonight. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powell, will you do an invocation for us, please?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Father, we are grateful to be in this place and grateful for all those who are here serving the public in their interest. And we ask you to bless them and give them your favor as they consider important business in the city. Lord, we pray over those who work in the city, the folks who actually do all the difficult things that make the city beautiful or work properly and take care of all of the things that the city is designed to do, Lord. It's impressive and difficult. And we ask that you bless those folks who work here, again, with your favor and with your blessings. And, Lord, we are mindful that we've been in this meeting a number of times and council member Shelton hadn't been here. Lord, that's an unusual event for which I know he is really yearning to be in this place. So, Lord, he needs your healing hand and, Lord, we just lift him up, that you would bless him, heal him, and that at our next meeting, he would be back to add all the wonder that he does to what we do. Lord, we thank you for this time and we ask you to bless this city in Jesus' name.
Amen. All right, thank you, Tony. I do have a few announcements to make about some meetings that are coming up. Unless I state differently, all of these meetings are held here in the community room. Of course, we have our council meeting tonight. Municipal court is September the seventeenth at one P M.
Eighteenth, nine o'clock.
Okay, I'm advised that's the eighteenth. Planning commission meets September the twenty-fourth at six P M. Tree board meeting, September twenty-sixth at six P M. Our next council work session is October the third at six thirty P M. Main Street Commission meeting, October eighth, eight A M. Historic preservation meeting, October the eighth at six P M. Downtown Development Authority meeting, October ten, nine A M. Social Circle Development Authority meeting is October the tenth at three P M. And that meeting is held in the City Hall conference room. Our next council meeting will be October the fifteenth at six thirty P M. Up next, we have presentations, employee introduction and recognition.
Good evening.
Hey.
Didn't know we was gonna have such a cool turnout tonight. Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, council members, bring before you two of our newest additions. One is a what I call a boomerang. We had them for a while, we lost them and we brought them back. Jerry James has been with us before. The company he works for now made him an offer that he couldn't refuse to come work for him full-time. And he's been doing that for years and he's been doing the reserve thing for Butts County. And we had an opportunity to issue to give him the opportunity to come over, come back home and work for us part-time. And we gave him the offer and he jumped right at it. And so we've got him back working for us part-time. He's really been helping out here recently now that we've got some of it in the academy and stuff helping us bridge the workload gap. Ladies and gentlemen, Jerry James.
Welcome back, Jerry.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Next one we have is Wayne Brown. Wayne comes to us via snowball. Wayne is the corner block of our reserve program. That's something the city manager and I talked about when I first came on board. I firmly believe in the reserve program. He brings forty years of experience with him, everything from lieutenant over patrol to doing code enforcement. So there really isn't anything in law enforcement that he hasn't done. So he brings that wealth of information, wealth of knowledge for us. But one of the main primary things that we're going to do with our reserve program is on the Wednesdays that we hold court, that will basically be their entire program. So it relieves the entire police department from having to work court that entire day. If you come here on a court day, there's nobody in the police department or all over here. So hopefully by bringing on Mr. Brown and three other folks, we'll be able to alleviate that. Plus, that's a great cost savings for the community and for the police department. Mr. Brown?
Thank you for the opportunity to work together. Looking forward to it. Get everything looking, running like cheap lumps of little pieces of dirt.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome to Social Circle.
No, appreciate it.
Robbie, I think you can clear the room, can't you?
So first of all, I'll do the street matter. Can you come on up? Okay. First, we have Cadarius Partey Junior. No, no, we call him Junior. He has one child and it's a girl. He's single and he likes race cars. So I'd like you to welcome Cadareous.
Thank you.
Welcome.
For the opportunity.
He gets to wear some T-shirts.
And then the next one is Daniel Brown. Daniel works on the street department. He's married and has two girls and he likes riding dirt bikes.
Thank you for that, Tony.
Thank you. Welcome.
The next one I have is Jeremy Reese. Jeremy is married, has three kids, two boys and a girl. And he grew up in Social Circle and he likes to fish, hunt and farm.
Yeah, yeah, welcome.
Then I have Kevin Daly. He's on water distribution. He works under J C. He's been married for forty years. Three kids, four grandkids. Grew up in Social Circle, likes to fish, woodwork and landscape. Likes to name his machinery. His cabota is Coco and his truck is Betsy.
Also have a zero turn, call it old red. My wife drives it. Like, crap.
Thank you.
The next I have Chris Brown. He's working in water distribution and learning the ropes and eager to get his certification. He's married, has two kids, one boy, one girl. Grew up in the surrounding area, likes to hunt and fish, but one downfall, he's an Alabama fan. Thank you, guys. Next, I'm gonna bring up the gas, the gas guys. First, I'm gonna bring up Ms. Rhonda. Ms. Rhonda's worked in gas compliance for nine years. She lives in Madison, Georgia, and we stole her from Madison. She has three children, four grandchildren and another one on the way. Congratulations. And she enjoys gardening, working in her yard. And in her spare time, she loves to fish. She also does weddings, floral design on the site, and she loves working at her church. Welcome. Oh, and I will tell you, Rhonda was very instrumental, Rhonda and Rusty, and working together with helping us pass our P S C inspections, which was four days of going through books and records. So, thank you.
No issues, Mr. Brown?
No issues. And hoping everything gets cleared off the books. Then I have Brian Trent. Brian Trent. He is a senior gas tech. And he came, he's got twenty-nine years' experience in natural gas. Started off in natural gas in nineteen ninety-five at the age of eighteen. And his life has been messed up ever since. And he started contracting for Atlanta Gaslight as a Mueller distributor contractor, distribution contractor. Then went to Northern Pipeline Contractors and from there went to the city of Social Circle and worked here for fourteen years. Left here and went to Madison and worked with Rusty for eight years. And now he's back to finish his last seven years. Fun fact, he enjoys working outside, working, working on his hobby, which is his Jeep. And he loves going to pitch and forge and cooking out entertaining company and good friends. But in the end, he's just a regular guy, seven to four, Monday through Friday. And at night, when everyone is sleeping, he becomes Batman. Because he's always the one out on the road fixing if there's any calls for gas. So, and then Rusty, I'm gonna bring Rusty up. This is Rusty Johnson.
Good evening.
We stole him from Madison. And he's been a big asset. He has two sons, five grandsons. And he comes to...
Six months to five.
Six months to five years, those grandsons are, wow. He likes to hunt and fish. He loves football and baseball. And he also loves his goats. He's worked in natural gas for eighteen years. And you'll have to talk to him sometime about some baseball.
Robbie, I have one question. Am I gonna have to deal with Mayor Perryman out of, out of Madison now?
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to know. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, is that it for employee introductions? Amber?
Good evening. Okay, this is the downtown rundown for September. I'm gonna start off with homecoming festivities. This is homecoming weekend Social Circle. And downtown will be the location for watching the homecoming parade tomorrow afternoon, which starts at six thirty. The homecoming game is this Friday night, starting at seven thirty. Now, I have to throw in here that Trace's class has won the tailgate alumni for the last three years?
Two years.
Two years.
We didn't compete the first year.
Okay, so I know y'all are, y'all are trying to win again this year, right? Yeah, yeah.
And the Keeners are honorary members?
We love them.
Um, next on the list is coffee and conversations. This month, our networking coffee and conversations event will be hosted by the Social Circle Police Department here in the community room on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at nine thirty A M. And everyone from the public is invited to attend. Uh, citywide cleanup, the citywide cleanup will be Saturday, September twenty-eighth at eight A M. Right outside here at the community room in the portico. Volunteers can meet here for coffee and supplies and be given street assignments. Uh, this will also be the dumpster days weekend where we have the dumpsters out at the public works lot. And that will be on Saturday and Sunday of that weekend from eight to four each day. And then last on the rundown is the thirtieth annual Friendship Festival. I'm excited to announce that we have filled every space for Friendship Festival and we have a waiting list. So, um, yes, it was, we were, we got a lot of last-minute applications. So it, it's, it's gonna be a good year for Friendship Festival. We have a full day of shopping, food, entertainment and fun for the kids planned. Uh, I don't know if you've seen our shirt design for this year. There's a preorder that's out now. Um, you can go online and order a shirt if you'd like to, and then we'll have shirts available at the festival. But it sort of mimics the twenty-fifth, which was one of our best-selling shirts ever. So, um, please make plans to join us downtown on October the fifth.
Is there a flyer out for this event?
Yes, I am. And then we, we had a little hiccup with the banners, so they're going out tomorrow. They had the wrong date on them, so, um, but yeah, we're, we're excited. Any questions?
Good. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Um, I failed to mention earlier, not a lot of you in here for the employee introduction, but if you don't want to stay for the main event, you're certainly welcome to, to go. Next up, we have citizens' requests, and I don't believe we've had any for this meeting. Council requests, do we have any?
I don't have a council request, but just a comment. Um, just wanted to thank our police force for the last couple of weeks and everything they've done with our school system. Um, I've talked to the superintendent and she was just bragging over and over about Chief and his staff, so.
Good. Thank you, Nathan. Anyone else? All right, next up, we have the agenda approval. I'm not aware of any, any additions, Mr. City Manager. So entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Good. A motion from Tyson and a second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, coming up, we have, uh, public hearings. We have three of them tonight, beginning with a rezone for two thirty-six North Cherokee Road.
So the first public hearing that we have is a request to rezone the property at two thirty-six North Cherokee Road from residential medium density to business for the purpose of expanding the current business into both sides of the structure. Rezoning this property would also bring it into compliance with the updated Unified Development Code. And because the, the current use is not allowed under the current, current code except by means of special use approval. Um, the, the goal is to allow for future expansion of the current business that is there into the second side of the building. Previously, um, this building has been used as a residential duplex and then a business moved in, um, a few years ago to one side. Um, and they're currently operating as a live-work use with residents on one side and a business on the other. The, uh, by rezoning the property to business, the applicant would have the option to continue to either lease the other side as a residential, expand their current business into the other side or offer that space as a commercial tenant space as well. The business is currently grandfathered in as it was operating prior to the adoption of the U D C. Um, any exterior changes to the character? Any exterior changes, um, to the property would still require a certificate of appropriateness before proceeding with them. And this, uh, staff recommends approval of the rezone request from R M D to business. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request to rezone from R M D to business with the following condition, that the property must maintain thirty-five percent pervious surface.
Okay. Any questions for Ashley?
So I guess I think we asked in the, in the work session, did we ever figure out when that, that this became a split property?
It's not a split property, it's a duplex.
Or the duplex, did we ever figure out when it became like used as a business? Because I was never worried that it was a business actually at that location.
I believe it was within probably the last five years. Um, it may have been four years ago, four or five years. So probably twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, maybe in there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, um, public hearing is open. Uh, we had no one sign up for public comment, but if there's anyone here, I will allow you to speak. If there's anyone here to speak in favor, please come forward. Yeah, is the...
Yeah, the applicant typically gets a chance to open up the public hearing and...
I'm sorry, I didn't realize applicant was here.
Yeah, the applicant is here tonight.
Yep.
I signed up the wrong, the wrong spot. Pardon.
Good evening, y'all. Um, my name is Dally East. I represent the business that we are looking to expand our operations. So thank you for the opportunity for me to come tonight and speak to you about this. Um, so do I just do a rundown of this?
However you wanna present it, if you wanna say ditto, that's fine too.
What she said, yes. Exactly.
Wait, go ahead. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead. You have anything else?
Do you have anything?
Uh, I don't think so. I'm here to answer questions if y'all have any.
When it came to the planning and zoning's recommendation, are you, are you guys okay with that recommendation? Does that fit y'all's purposes?
Absolutely. So we're a financial services provider. We operate under normal business hours, Monday through Friday, nine to five. And we love this property. We've done a historic reservation, preservation of this house when it was purchased in two thousand thirteen. So we are on board with keeping it at the additional change to the pervious surface. So no, no qualms there. We love this lot and love this property.
Anything else for the applicant? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Is the, um, is anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Is anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a vote.
I guess, I'm gonna say, if it was expanding the business, just expanding the business, then I'm more so, then I'm fine with expanding the business. But doing two separate businesses in that one duplex, um, maybe not really in favor of that because maybe we've just had issues with the house down there. If they double, if they add another meter, they will, they can bring that back and say that they're gonna split the house up.
The, the intent of the applicant is to expand their business, but they also wanted the option to fall back on in case that doesn't necessarily work out. I think the big difference with the last property that you were speaking about is that was intended for one residential tenant. And this has already been upgraded for residential tenant and a commercial tenant.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but they can, you can still, it's a house. They can split the house and then ask for another meter and pay a cap and all that. And then split it up and then we'll have two separate things. That's just my opinion on it.
Sure.
I mean, that's, you know, like I said, if, if it's, if it's allowing one business, that business to expand, then I'm, I'm more so with that than if it's doing that business as possibly something else. I don't know if we could put that in there if they come back later and ask for that or...
They'll be hard to manage, I think.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm concerned with what type of business will come from that other side. Since this is in a residential neighborhood.
And then we won't have no, a way of determining what business is in there.
Can you go back to the zoning map? So this property actually borders an O and I property. And then the property after that, which is the blue properties, and the property after that is business zoned. So there is commercial zone property all around this property. The only, the only places that touch the residential property are, um, the south side and the east side.
And I think that one of the main differences that I saw between the previous application that came in was the location. With this one being on Cherokee, I think it makes more sense for a business property to be there rather than on Hightower, um, more in residential spaces.
And there are business uses that are allowed in residential medium density currently as well.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm more inclined to allow them to expand their business.
But with the zoning, it would allow the option for two businesses to be in there, for them to expand their business or for a business and a residential place to be in there.
Correct.
Yeah, so it really opens up all the options.
It opens up all the options for the property owner. Um, this is the route that they decided to take. We, when we met with, um, them originally, we said, you know, you could go O and I, but that would limit your options a little bit more. You wouldn't have the residential, commercial aspect of it. Um, but they would still be allowed to have two businesses or the one financial service in there. But the business allowed them to keep the live-work use as a fallback if, if it turns out that they aren't, uh, able to expand their business. Um, but their, their main intent is to expand their business into that other side. They just wanted to have as many options on the table. At least that's, that's my impression, yeah.
So if we allow them to expand the business on the other side, could they fall back? Either they can rent the other side back out for the other business?
If they expand their business into the other side and they tear down the separating wall, they would have to then rebuild back the separating wall. Um, if they rent it out to another, if they rent out the other side to another business, it also goes back to fire code too. You, you, you have to deal with some separation things, um, when you're, when you're upgrading the other side to a commercial use rather than a residential use. And, and can, can correct me on that if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's how that works.
So if the concern is going to the residential side, I think you can add a condition to this, to say that it's business only. And if it goes residential, it'd have to come back to council for a, for approval.
Yeah, but...
Or likewise, if, you know, if, like...
I mean, by purpose and purpose and is what, what type of business is going in?
Right, or you could go the other way too, yeah.
You know, what type of business is going in there? But once we open this up for residential, I mean, for business, then that's two separate buildings. And then their intention might be to stay here and, but they might outgrow where they're at and decide to go somewhere else. And then you've got two separate buildings and then we're trying to figure out what's gonna go in those two spots or what the neighbors want behind them now. That was good with the financial institution behind them, but they might not be good with the next thing that is allowed to come.
As a reminder, this is also in the downtown corridor overlay, so there are prohibited uses on this, on, within that overlay. Um, there's not a ton, but it is, it's like tattoo parlors, um, package stores. That's just off the top of my head.
What about the size parlor?
Uh, I'm not sure that's... Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that that's an explicit, um, prohibited use in the downtown corridor overlay off the top of my head. Now, I can, I can check really fast, but, um, I don't think we specified that in the downtown corridor overlay.
You know, I'm just thinking of things that could be put there and then your neighbors don't want it behind you.
You also have a pretty big space limitation on this building too, short of tearing it down and building back something else. So I mean, like, I don't, I don't know that a restaurant would necessarily go in right here because of the space limitation and, um, all of that.
I mean, it would make sense for another office kind of business to move into a place like this.
Can we limit it to an office type of business?
Um, I, I... Yeah, you can, you can condition the type of uses that you would want. Uh, you can also, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you can downzone it to office institutional? Is that an option or are they too similar?
You can go below what it was advertised.
Okay, so office institutional will be a less intensive use. So you could rezone it to office institutional, which would have, they, they have a lot of similar uses, but some of your more intensive commercial uses are not allowed in office institutional.
Would that close off the residential piece or could that still...
That would close off the live-work piece, so...
Office institutional would be more aligned with what you have up at Brookstone.
Right.
Yeah.
And most of what you got at Brookstone will be a nine to five or, or something like that.
Correct.
And both, and all of those align with the future land use map, so...
Keep going, what's your motion?
Yeah, I want a motion to zone it as office institutional.
Do you want to include the condition from Planning Commission as well?
Yeah. Will you state that condition?
Uh, to... Sorry.
Can I, can I, before you get there, can I ask if that, the applicant, if that's something that y'all would even want?
That's a great question. My question back to the council members would be, does that mean then our residential side is cut off? Uh, because we have a wonderful tenant there that we... The part of this whole thing is we don't want to displace them. They're a sweet little couple and, you know, we don't want to displace them.
So doesn't O and I allow a certain number of units per acre? Because that's what, what the, uh, the, uh, property of Dan Sorrow has up in Anthony Henderson was.
Not, not under the new code, it's a special use now, which she has at...
Not, not under the new code. It's a special use now, which she has a special use on that property. And we didn't advertise for that special use for the live work, so.
Let's ask this. You have a resident, you have somebody in there now?
That is correct.
So isn't that person in there right now, grandfathered in?
Not if he, not if he changes something.
Then they gotta put him out.
We would withdraw our application before we kick them out.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm asking, so that will-
It wouldn't be allowed.
So, here we go.
So, so-
How do we? How do we put all this together and make it work for what they're looking for?
You could, you could motion to rezone.
You could motion to rezone for business with the condition that only O and I uses would be allowed. That's, that's, if that's what you're attempting to do. I will say though, those uses are very, very similar.
What, what do you mean by that?
There, there, there are very few uses that are allowed in, that, that don't. So in the chart, there's columns. Most of the time, if it's allowed in, if it's a more intensive commercial use, it's just, it's just a special use in O and I. So it would come before you guys, but it's not, it's not so dissimilar that it's, it, it would hurt them.
But the types of uses under O and I are less intensive.
Correct, but you would also have to add, you would have to, so you would condition, if you wanted to do it this way, you'd have to rezone it to business, condition it to be O and I. But you would also have to allow the live-work use without a special use. I think I got that right.
Jay, is that?
It would, but it, it-
Gets complicated.
It gets complicated sending out an action notice and, you know, making sure that, that is perpetuated throughout the prop, like, you, you, we would have to make sure that that's followed throughout the property's life. And all of that business. I mean, we can make it happen if that's the, the desire of the council.
I think where things get tricky with the residential side of this is we typically don't know when there's a change of tenants with the residential. Okay, so it may have somebody in there right now, person could move out tomorrow, move in, and we don't know, because it looks the same to us. The difference between that and a business is that they'd have to come and get a business license on a business, and so we would know when that use changes.
And, and a big reason for the change now currently is to put out a sign. Is that one of the big reasons too?
Yes, so, so the sign ordinance does not, the way it's currently zoned, the sign ordinance is very, very limited on the types of signs you can put out because it's technically a residential zoned lot at this point in time. If, if the business designation allows for a, a lot more diff, a lot of different types of signs, even O and I is, is pretty restrictive when it comes to signs. So that, that, that was another component. Thank you. Thank you for remembering that.
So we're, we're trying to do this zoning, rezoning for?
Turn the microphone on.
For?
We're doing the rezoning so, for signage.
No. So, so there, there's multiple, there, this is an onion. This is an onion rezone. And the, the whole reason this got started was when I first got here, I found out, this was before the UDC was passed and everything. I found out that there was a business in this duplex. It was, it, at that point in time, it was not allowed in RMD. So I reached out to the property owner, you know, we set up a couple of meetings. I said, look, we're, the UDC is coming into play. The business would be allowed in RMD. The live-work use is allowed in RMD. And then the UDC got passed, and now they're trying to expand their business, but their business is not allowed in RMD zoning. So they're trying to figure out, they were trying to figure out a way to have all three uses, which is the, the live-work that they currently have. So that's the key component that we're trying to make sure that we're keeping so they don't have to kick out their tenant, and then the financial service. The, the goal, at least when we spoke at our pre-application meeting, was as soon as the residential tenant moved out, was to expand that business. But they wanted the option to, if that tenant wanted to extend their lease or, you know, any, anything like that, that they wouldn't displace someone. So the main goal of this is to expand the Joel Hubbard Financial and all of that into the other side. But they wanted the option to, if, if it comes to where, there's two businesses currently, and there's Joel Hubbard Financial and- Yeah, there, there's two financial services in there, but basically they could use both sides as offices for the two separate, separate services. I don't know if that helped clarify anything, but-
This, this is what I'm, this is what I'm thinking. That why can't we go as we was doing to allow the residential? And allow them to expand their business if they choose to expand their business and take everything else out? And then if their tenant leaves and they decide they want to come in and ask to split, split the business, then we can put it in O and I as office institution.
So you're saying pretty much leave it as it is?
Allow them to expand, because that's what they're, we can put it, that they can expand their business. And then if it decides that they don't want, the tenant leaves and they want to separate the buildings, then we can do the, the O and, the O and I. I mean, because right now, we're, we're still-
The, the issue is they're trying to put up a sign too.
So, so just to clarify, y'all's issue with going to business is just what potential business might move in in the future?
And then, because you know, everybody's cool with who's in their backyard until, you know, starts changing in their backyard. And then it'd be like, I can't believe y'all allowed this to be right here.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up a list of all the businesses that are allowed in business without, by right, without a special use. Give me one second. So that's your typical stuff like retail uses, you know, financial institutions, uh, personal services. Let's see. So you can keep the live, live work. You can have a convent or a monastery. You can have a nursing home. This is all, this is all by right. You can have a club or a lodge. Um, you can have a small daycare. There are stipulations on that. You can have a school. There are stipulations on that. You can have a hospital, a library. You can have a place of worship with a load less than a hundred. You can have a large place of worship. There are some stipulations on that. You can have a boarding, grooming, veterinarian, animal service. You can have a restaurant. You can have a bar. You can have a brew pub. You can have a coffee roastery. You can have a craft establishment. There are some limitations on those. You can have a, a small entertainment or event space. You can have a financial service. You can have other financial, oh, I take that back. You can't have that. That's a special use. You can have a bed and breakfast. You can have a hotel. You can have a medical service office. You can have a regular office. You can have a maintenance or repair service. You can have a personal service, studio or instructional service. You can have general retail sales. You can have fireworks sales. You can't have liquor sales in downtown corridor overlay. You can have a indoor sports and recreation place. Uh, all of those are special uses. You can have an artisan fabrication and production place. You can also have an industrial service and self-service storage. Oh, I apologize. That is not allowed. Sorry, I'm going off my phone screen here. And that is pretty much it. Everything else is gonna have limited, limitations on that as well, or is a special use.
So according to that, if we're not putting a hospital there, we're probably in a shape.
Which, again, space limitations are coming into factor here as well.
I know I've heard something about entertainment.
That, uh, that would be like the social eighteen thirty-two down, downtown, like a small event center. You couldn't have a large one because it's not five acres.
And what's personal service?
A personal service is, and, and remember, this is in the downtown corridor overlay, so some of these don't apply. But like a hair salon or tattoo shops fall under that. Basically, anything to improve your person. I guess a botox office would also fall under that. Yeah, massage parlors would fall under that. I mean, I haven't gotten any calls about anybody trying to open up a massage parlor in town, but that's not to say it couldn't be there.
But some of these things fall under other regulations as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm great with the business. I'm great with zoning it business. I, I, I think y'all are too that are controlling the conversation though.
Well, I just don't like approving something where I don't know what's going there.
And then when you get in the vague that, you know, that some of it, the downtown overlay may cover and then it may not, and then it slips in. And then we're sitting here with a room full of people trying to figure out why did we allow this to come here? And it's nothing that we can say that can get it out.
It sounds like they are not ready to do this shit?
No, that's not the case. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, the, the lease with the tenant is up at the end of this year.
Uh, January.
Yeah, so in January. And the plan was for the, for the applicant to expand their business, rebrand, right? Or is that? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
More or less. So what we have here is a company that my parents started forty-two years ago. Both of them are retiring. I'm taking over. It's two financial services, tax preparation and investment advisory services. When both are retired, it will now be under one name just for cohesion, cohesiveness. And then, but realistically, because we're tax preparers, we wouldn't touch anything until after tax season. Just because we don't have the bandwidth to do it. And the tenant expires at the end of January. And all that we're looking to do is knock out the wall between the two spaces so that we have more avail, more availability to expand and add people, employees, so.
Yeah, and, and I'll add on to the fact because the planning commission had a much briefer conversation about the same thing that we're talking about here with the different uses. And, and the potential for, you know, if this business ever left for whatever reason, which I'm sure there's no plans to. The planning commission didn't see an issue with any of the allowable uses in business. And that's also why they added the condition for the impervious surface part so that even if one of these other businesses did come in, into play, they wouldn't be able to like just completely bulldoze everything and pave over and, and like put a building for the whole lot or put a parking lot for the whole lot, because this is in the downtown corridor overlay, which allows for a hundred percent pervy, or impervious surface. And to go back to what you were saying about the downtown corridor overlay, the prohibited uses there are animal boarding, check cashing pawn shop, or other types of financial services like that. Extended stay lodging, tattoo parlors, vape shop or smoke shop, vehicle equipment sales or service, vehicle maintenance and repair, minor vehicle maintenance and repair, major, equipment and material storage, and all other wireless facilities. So those are the prohibited uses there.
Let me ask, Dally, if, if, I don't even know if this is possible, but if we made the condition to zone it O and I effective at a later date, can you do that? You can't?
I don't think so.
You can't like, you can't make it effective as of?
Comes immediate change.
Does it? Okay. I was gonna say, if, if that was the case, I mean, if, if, you know, you said they have it till the end of January. I mean, y'all's intention is to knock down the wall and to make that into an office. You just don't ready to do that now?
That is correct. Mainly because we don't, I mean, we don't want to displace them. They have nowhere to go. Interest rates are through the roof, and we just don't want to do that to them. We want to let them go through the end of the lease and give them plenty of notice.
The other reason for rezoning at this time was so that they were able to put up a sign in the intermediate. So people know that there's business there.
But you have to know to know.
Yeah. Right now, it's on a need-to-know, I guess.
It's a secret business.
So Jay, will you, you will lay out the options? I know they have approved with conditions. They probably have a deny.
It's approved with conditions. You can approve a lesser intense use in the zoning ordinance. You can deny, or you could table it to a date certain. Those are really your options.
Or do you know how they have to withdraw?
Yeah.
The sign part, is it any way to fix the sign part?
They'd have to ask for a variance, and that has to go through zoning procedures law. So that has to go back before planning commission and all that.
Not on the table tonight? Not on the table tonight?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, that probably, that would have cleared the sign issue up. And then at a given time-
We talked about, we talked about step rule. We talked about, it's like two options.
The one most restrictive is to approve it as, and correct me if I'm wrong, but to approve the business classification, allow the live-work option to be attached to it, and restrict it to its current financial services as a condition. That, that, that would mean they could do everything they're talking about and give a sign. But if they ever change the use, which you guys are, they'll have to come back. If you wanted to give them, the, the, the next step, I think, is to, is to make the condition to O and I principal permitted uses and attach the special use restrictions to it.
Will we be able to do that without advertising special use?
The condition would be, we're not just allowing ever O and I use. It would require, if it's, if an O and I required a special use, you'd have to come get a special use. So you're, you're, you're allowing all the uses of O and I in the two sides. But if it's not per, permitted without a special use permit, they're still gonna have to come back. And so to me, those are, those are two steps. E, e, either ones, ones are very restrictive to the current use. Residents could stay. Then they could expand that business to both sides. But if they're going to do something besides financial services, they have to come back and, and ask that the condition be changed.
Okay.
Okay.
So-
I'm sorry, first of all.
No, I was just gonna say, say if, okay, we do this and then they sell the property. Does that still?
The, the good thing about that is if they sell the business as it is, that business could continue. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't take value away from the business operations they have. They could sell real estate and business. If the business was one that was not financial services as they are, then they have to come get a zoning change.
So could you state that again?
It would be a, a motion to approve the rezoning to business, allowing the live-work option, but condition it to its current financial services use only.
And what did the applicant think about that?
My question would be, what happens after we don't own this property? That would, as a citizen, I would want to make sure that that's-
So the conditions stay with the property? Okay, and so, and so that means that if, that if you sell a property, and if another business going to come in and say bought your business, they would be allowed to continue to do so.
Only if they were financial services?
Only if they're financial services. If, if it was a dog grooming business, they would have to come in and get-
Or an attorney's office or something.
And, and I guess what that does for us, then that assures us what's coming back to that building, and it's not gonna be a massage parlor.
But it would limit your options of who you could sell to, potentially.
And thank you for the clarification. Is that the only path that we have? Is that we accept it with the riders or withdraw our application?
I can only speak for me. I am good with that path. I probably wouldn't be good with the first initial path.
Being, taking it to business only with RMD, okay.
I'll also add that if there is a motion that is made and the motion fails, then you're stuck with it for a year. Can't, nothing else can happen to it for a year. Can't, nothing else can happen to it for a year.
That's why I think we're trying to clear all this up before we, before someone makes a motion to make. That's why I asked, was she's okay with that?
Right, and, and.
Before somebody makes a motion and.
Trying to make sure that she understands her options to allow her the opportunity to perhaps take a step back if she wants to.
And I think that's why I told her I was clear with that path.
That it's, it, we can move it to the business with the residential rider, but only keep it financial services in this space? And what is, what is the statute of limitations with that? Is it for the life of the property?
For the life of the property.
Until.
Until rezoned.
You're, you're not restricted to asking in the future. You could, if, if, if city manager's description, if you get approved to that tonight, you can come back next week and ask for another business in there. Council just gets a look at it. If you get denied, you're gonna have to wait a year, uh, cut out your sign and expand your current business.
But.
But just because they say financial services today, doesn't mean they will approve, uh, some other use.
It's just, it, it, it allows us to, to understand, because it's, it is commercial on this side, but it is a residential house on, on the other side of it. And that just allows us to, to look at what's going to be right there.
Is there precedence in the city that this is the same situation for other business owners? Or we've one of one?
Well, I know of no others right now.
I didn't even know you had a office. I, I wasn't aware that it was an office in there.
I mean, there, there are very few duplexes to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, the, the other option, I guess, we could have is, we could table it for tonight, correct? And that would give y'all time to talk about it internally.
That would be my preference, just to, so that we could talk to our attorney, our internal attorney, just to make sure that, you know, this is the path that we want to move forward with. Um, so would it be, we just table, table it?
Yeah.
It, I mean, is one month enough time? Or, it, it has to be tabled to a date certain, which would be the next council meeting. Or if you need more time, we could do it to a future council meeting.
If we could do the November one, that'll get us past October fifteenth deadline. I would appreciate that.
Council meeting in November, September.
Okay, y'all give it a?
I am.
All right.
And will the official recommendation be written up so I can take it back? So that my understanding? Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table this until the November nineteenth city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Nathan and a second from Tracy. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, next up, we have a text amendment to the UDC code, parking of commercial vehicles in a residential district.
Okay, so, um, this text amendment is in direct response to a variance that was heard, um, a few months ago. Uh, there's been an issue with some citizens not being able to park their commercial vehicles at their homes because of the zoning designation or the inability to screen those commercial vehicles from the public right of way. So, um, we're proposing a text amendment to allow for commercial vehicles that do not require CDL to drive, to be allowed to be parked in a carport, driveway, or the side or rear yard behind the main building line. Um, a CDL is required to drive a combination of vehicles weighing over twenty-six thousand one pounds or more, a single vehicle with a gross vehicle weight of twenty-six thousand one pounds or more, a single vehicle designed to transport more than fifteen persons, including the driver, or any vehicle used in the transport of hazardous materials. Staff recommended approval of this text amendment, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this text amendment as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ashley? Um, I would assume that means since, looks like the city is the applicant, you would also entertain those questions?
Yes.
Any other questions? So I'm guessing this is gonna clear up the issue that we had with him parking a trailer or a truck?
Yes. As long as he is able to park it on a driveway, in a carport, in the side or rear yard behind the main building line, we're good after this passes.
Would you say they can park in a driveway?
Yes. That was a text amendment that was approved, um, a, a few months back, too. Um, right around, probably July, I think, July.
Other questions?
So, when you say driveway, they can park like in the front?
In a driveway, in a paved driveway. Driveways have to be paved. Yeah. It can't be just like in their front yard. It has to be on a driveway.
Yeah, driveway in the front, yeah. Okay.
Not on the street?
Not on the street, no.
Yeah.
Anything else? But this, this does restrict it to vehicles, isn't, like, CDL drivers don't, so they can't put a truck, a trailer on your driveway?
Correct. Those have to be screened from view completely.
Anything else? All right, public hearing is open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a decision.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the text amendment as presented.
Second, that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Uh, next up, we have the regulation of the sale of personal vehicles.
So there have been several locations where the personal sale of vehicles has been advertised throughout the city uh, to maintain the aesthetic look of residential areas. Staff is proposing a text amendment to limit the length of display time for personal sales, uh, for, for personal vehicle sales. Um, this would allow the residential areas to maintain a residential aesthetic, and it will provide, prevent personal vehicles for sale from being displayed for an undetermined amount of time or indefinitely. Uh, this use would only be allowed as a limited accessory use, uh, in the following, uh, districts, which is AG, R twenty-five, R fifteen, and R and D. Um, staff recommends approval of the text amendment, and the planning commission has recommended approval of the text amendment with the attached highlighted modifications in your packet. Um, and, and the planning commission's modifications were really just reiterating the state law, um, stating that only two vehicles shall be displayed per property. Um, they can't be any closer than ten feet from the back of the curb, uh, uh, nor ten feet from the public right of way. And if they're classified as inoperable or junk vehicle, they don't fall under the personal vehicle sales, um.
And that's mainly if they're tagged?
Yes, so if they're tagged, they are not classified as a junk or an operable vehicle.
Okay, questions for Ashley as the applicant and the presenter?
And then we limited, I thought we was talking about how many, uh, was it, how many days it can run?
Yes, so the orig, the, what staff, uh, proposed was thirty days with forty-five days in between, um, up to five times per year. And the five times per year is the state law.
Then I guess my other question is, I'm trying to make sure we clear all the. So if it's a blue car, that's thirty days on that blue car? And if the car becomes red, like a different car, you know what I'm saying? Is, or is it, I'm trying to make sure, can they still rotate cars? Or it's just thirty days of, of vehicle on their, on their property for sale?
Different car.
Yeah, it's thirty days like per vehicle.
Different cars. So you could have a blue one and a red one for sale right now?
Mm-hmm. The blue one sells tomorrow. So, exercise that one from the system. The red one is still part of, and they have thirty days.
To sell the red?
To sell the red one.
And they can't display that red one after the thirty days until forty-five days?
Right.
Pass. And if you have a yellow car, that, that.
Then they can bring something else back in.
Right, they could, yeah, they, they could, they could bring, so on, on day thirty-one, they could remove the red car and bring in a yellow car. But they can only do that for five different cars for the year.
Yeah.
And this is addressing, uh, locations where it appears that they're, uh, uh, operating, um, an unlicensed dealership. By having three or four cars out for sale on the street at any given time. Year round.
And that's the state law's concern, too. That's how it's written, so.
Anything else? All right, public hearing is open to the floor. If anyone is here to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for deliberation.
Um, so staff is gonna have to notify them every time they put a car up?
It would be something we, we watch and observe, yes.
Or could be reported.
Reported, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out how do we, um, we know that if we're not, when they park a car up there, and we say day one, how do that person know that we understand that that's day one? If we're not relaying the message to them that it starts today, they got thirty days? Because then we'll be saying, that car's been up there thirty days.
Right.
And they'll be saying, nope.
It's just like, it's just like somebody parked at a parking meter.
I'll be saying, I, I, it was there Tuesday.
Yeah.
That one thirty days, I got four more days, or one more day, or prove to me that was thirty days.
We could send them a letter. When we observe it, we can send them a letter.
We can, we can send a letter, or, I mean, it would be creating, like, like I suggested at the work session, we can also do like we do the yard sale permit. If you're gonna put a personal vehicle up for sale, you have to come in, fill out a paperwork, and.
So what I'm.
You don't have to pay, you just have to fill out a page.
I'm just saying that you're, we're creating more work on staff, and then we're, we're creating, we're gonna create a, a, a person that's gonna tell you that you can't prove that that car was there thirty days. How do I know that you know that that car was there thirty days?
We also have city cell phones where we can take a picture that are timestamped.
That's what I'm saying, so we're, we're, we're creating work. But, I mean, I'm.
If we're out and about patrolling anyways, this is part of that proactive approach to code enforcement.
We're also trying to, uh, of improving the aesthetics of the community as well, and that's kind of what we do.
I'm not against it, I'm just trying to say that we, you will have somebody, and if we miss, if Tom puts his car up there right now, and we drive by Tom's subdivision, and we put his car, wha, bam, I got a picture of Tom's car, but John put his car over there, and we missed it, John put his car the same day that, that Tom did it. And then we're telling Tom that he has to move his car, but he got a picture that John has his car over there at the same time. And then we're gonna be having, well, we're treating Tom differently than we're treating John. So I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna do it and make sure that everybody knows right then and there that, that, that it's across the board, that it's fair. It's, it's even, this is how we're going to enforce it. I'm just, like I said, I'm for it. We'll just figure out how we're gonna enforce it and know that it's, it's being enforced.
Well, you may not be able to, you know, pinpoint it at the same time, but once we are aware of it, then we will issue whatever we need to do. That's, I mean, you're not gonna.
It's exactly like how we do building permits. Any violation that we face, we, once we become aware of it.
Tall grass.
We, we either mitigate it, or we go through the process to, to fix that issue, or we send out a notice of violation.
So I would like to see approximately thirty days, not thirty days. Because we're saying that we, we don't know exactly when the thirty days are up.
It would be thirty, it would be thirty days. We would say in that letter, it would be, it's effective this date, you have thirty days from this date.
Approximately in codes?
I mean, that's.
It's not a fun, fun tip. That's worse.
So that's, that's fine. If we're gonna write a letter out, and we're gonna send a letter out and says, as of nine seventeen, you have thirty days to sell your vehicle, then that's fine, because they, they, they've been, they've been notified.
Yeah, it's, it's when we notice, I mean, you come in on a Monday morning, you see a car parked out front. You don't know if they put it out Friday night or Saturday morning.
That's what I'm saying, that's fine. If we're gonna take the time to send a letter out to let them know that, that at nine seventeen, we noticed you got thirty days, then that's, that's, that's fine. Because they can't say that they didn't get noticed.
All right.
Even though we got snail mail, but.
We can send it certified.
That, that's costly.
I mean, if you want to send a letter, we have to do, we're either paying for the stamp or the certified letter.
I don't even know if you have to do that, you can s.
Just take the letter over?
Take the letter over. You know, I mean, just like, just like hanging a door hanger on, on a code enforcement case, so you can, as, as of this date, there's a record of this.
I mean, that's fine. I just want, like I said, we need to make sure that we're notifying.
And I think the intent behind this is just to not have pop-up car lots that are popping up down the main corridor of our streets.
That's exactly right.
All right.
Okay, still ready for a motion? I'm assuming with conditions that have been prescribed, but it's, it's, we don't know how we're gonna notify.
I would, I would suggest.
That's like a policy.
Yeah, that's a policy, that's administrative.
The, the notice is administrative, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's how we're gonna, gonna do the job.
Gotcha. So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment as written.
Second.
Can I get clarification on if you mean with, with the planning commission's recommendations?
Yes, sorry, with the planning, uh, commission's recommendations.
Second.
Second still standing?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion from Nathan and a second from Tracy. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Taylor, consent agenda.
So we have five items on the agenda, consent agenda this evening. We have the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting from August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We have minutes from the executive session of August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We have the minutes of the mayor and council work session from September fifth, twenty twenty-four. We have an appro, approval of the budget amendment to appropriate five thousand dollars for the youth council. Um, that's coming out of, uh, general fund balance. Um, and then we have a bid award for lead and su, lead and copper su, uh, lead and copper service line inventory that will go to the, uh, little bidder of, uh, Utility and Water Services Incorporated, and the amount of one hundred seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars. Recommend approval.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion from Tracy and a second from, uh, Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Have no unfinished business, uh, lost her screen.
Lost my screen.
Okay, under new business, item number one, uh, resolution to approve the Jifa loan for five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for lead service line funding, and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute Jifa documents.
So this is related to the bid award that we just, uh, had, had approved. Um, and the, uh, this is actually a federal requirement where the city is seeking to conduct an inventory to identify existing lead service lines in its drinking water system, um, through different survey and other investigation activities. Um, you just awarded the bid, um, that this will help pay for. And, uh, this is to authorize, uh, the mayor and I to execute any paperwork.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Tracy and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Next up is an ordinance to reestablish the Main Street Commission.
So, um, back in February, uh, at the, at the, uh, mayor and council work session, um, we began to have some discussion about how the Main Street Commission should be reorganized in order to best fit the changing needs of the organization. Um, when the organization, the ordinance that's currently in place, um, is for a structure of Main Street Board that, quite frankly, is not what they do anymore. Um, it actually references, uh, the Main Street program, which we are not, no longer a part of. And so the Main Street Board has gone through and redone their, their, their bylaws. And, uh, it looks like we're, uh, in great shape to move ahead with a new, newly reformed, uh, and newly refocused body. And this resolution will, uh, reestablish, uh, the, um, Main Street Commission, um, under those bylaws.
Now, is this a resolution, or is this to, and, to reestablish an ordinance?
This is an ordinance.
Right.
Okay. And further down under board appointments, I'm assuming tonight, we're going to name all those members. Is that correct?
Yes.
Prepared to do that? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make the motion to establish the ordinance or replace the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, and a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Those opposed like sign, motion passes. All right, next up, we have um consideration to make Clark Street one-way during school hours only.
So um this is one that that uh we had considered handling administratively, but given that we didn't know if when Clark Street at East High Tower was made a one-way street, if that was done on the council level, we thought we'd go ahead and bring it uh and have it done on the council level um instead, just to make sure things all cleared out, but what you have over there is, you have a uh a one-way street basically going from um the elementary school over to the church parking lot, and that was done, I believe, to facilitate the flow of traffic at the school, uh especially in the mornings. And so there is a need to have the one-way traffic during school hours, however, after school hours, it actually kinda creates problems with the church and and people needing to get into the parking lot, they have to actually go around on North Cherokee and and uh enter in back that way. So a few weeks ago, we actually had a request from First Baptist Church to consider making this a one-way street except on Wednesday nights from five to nine and on Saturdays and Sundays. As we have thought about this, um we think there's probably other opportunities at night that that the the church may have some activities going on that then maybe they didn't think about, like maybe on a Tuesday night, or maybe some functions going on with the school over there, and so um we think the best recommendation here would would be to um continue to have Clark Street be a one-way street from seven AM to five PM, uh when school is in session. Um and so this would make it a two-way street in the evenings and also on Saturdays and Sundays, and furthermore, um given that the elementary school is getting ready to move to uh another building, um this would stay in place until they uh vacate that property, at which point um then the restriction would go away altogether.
Let's um, Teresa or Tyson, either one, you're both lifetime residents here, do you remember when that um that street was made one-way?
I'm gonna punt to Teresa.
I don't remember, like.
That's prob- probably a Steve question.
No, I think the.
Mike, Mike now.
Pastor.
Pastor, you got some information for us?
Yes, I'm I'm Pastor Mike Cardy from First Baptist Church, um I can answer that question for you, that that entire neighborhood was restructured when the current sanctuary and fellowship hall education building were built in nineteen ninety-six, and that's when houses were moved, the streets were realigned, it's when the parking lot was readjusted, it's when the street was the flow of traffic was designed, and it was, it was designed exactly as he described it, at that time, it's designed to keep the flow of school traffic going. And I, the thing that no one anticipated was the growth of the community, the growth of the school, and the growth of the church, and the needs that it was gonna impact. It is a train wreck of an intersection, quite honestly, and uh but I believe that's the timeframe that we're looking at. The the thing I'd wanna point out to you is, now, I've been here fifteen years, and unless the police department can document it, I don't think there's ever been any safety issues in that, on that street and on that location, so I just think it just lends itself to, it may be time to try to fix it just as he's described.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are other streets in the city that are two-way, that are much more narrow than that street is.
Cause technically, isn't, what's the um, what's the road that comes out on uh Cherokee, to Cherokee?
Well, Maple Street, Maple Street is.
To the left.
Maple, Maple Street feels like the entrance to the church.
Right, feels like a driveway.
But it's actually a street.
Right.
And uh Juniper is the street that comes in by the uh what used to be the funeral home.
Yeah.
And it turns onto Clark.
Yeah.
And then Clark goes all the way out to High Tower, and one of the problems that we have to remind people is that there is a city street between the back of the s- church pr- building property, building lot, and the parking lot.
Right, it goes through the parking lot.
We have to remind people, be careful when you cross that, cause technically, that is a city street, because there are residents who live on Clark Street, and they would benefit from this change as probably as much as the church would.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Juniper's even more narrow, I think, than.
Juniper's much more narrow, I think, honestly, I think Lakewood's probably more narrow than.
Maybe.
Than Clark Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Pastor, I I have a question for you, uh looking at this, if this recommendation passes, is this good with you, I mean, is that?
Well, yes, it, yes, it certainly is, I think it's a good, I think it's a good compromise.
It actually exceeds their request.
It does, it does exceed our request, so thank you for for the foresight.
My only thing is with Tony, because I don't wanna deal with this in two more years or a year, can we put in there that from here to now, and then when this elementary school leaves, did it just?
That's, that's part of what I'm recommending, yes.
Just, just throw it in, start it just.
So so, you know, asu- assuming that the school, when they leave, you know, when school's out in May, assuming that that's it, and they're not coming back, and they turn over to the city, um at that point, once the city takes possession of that property, we would then just, by virtue of this motion here, just remove the signs.
Okay, so we just say, when, soon as the city takes ownership of the property, then then it becomes a two-way street?
Now, it's pending completion of the school over there, which they project fall of twenty twenty.
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll be whenever they vacate the elementary school property.
Yeah, we say, we can say when we take ownership, so then at that point, then.
Uh that, that's a good point, cause I don't think the school system is intending to immediately vacate the property after they move the elementary school, they, I think there's still some contingency.
We will take possession in August.
Okay.
But they're still gonna be using the. Of the building and the property, there there are, they they will continue to have access to the bus garage and to the fuel pumps.
That's right, yeah.
All right, uh I'll make a motion to uh take the staff recommendation to make Clark Street a one-way street between the hours of seven and five when school is in session, and then once the school relocates to their new facility, the traffic will revert to a two-way all the time.
Second.
Okay, motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, motion passes, thank you. Uh next up, we have board appointments, and I know we have the Main Street Board, and I think there are some others, is that correct, Susan?
Library, I think. Um so we need to um reappoint all the people that were already on Main Street?
Yeah, I think, I think the quickest, the the cleanest way to handle it, um so that you don't like reset terms or anything like that.
Just keep their same terms.
Would be to reappoint them to fulfill their current terms. Um I believe there's actually one on there who um whose term is already expired.
It is.
January twenty-four.
Expired January of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, uh Chad Schumate has already expired.
And the other expire.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Does Chad have a desire to be reappointed?
Amber.
Amber, do we know?
Can we just force him? Depends on if you wanna ask him or not. And you know, I I think in order for them to begin to be able to conduct business um with, under their new bylaws, with with uh in terms of who uh and the numbers it takes to make up a quorum, what my suggestion would be, go ahead and reappoint him, and then allow him to resign if he doesn't want to be reappointed.
Okay, does the, does this body reappoint the chair, or is that their op- their opportunity to do that?
Um that's up to the Main Street Board.
The way, the way that me, Amber, and Susan wrote this uh or talked about and wrote it earlier today is that talking to Susan, there's three that are up in January twenty-five, is that correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And 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 there's one that's currently vacant, and then we're appointing everybody else, right?
One that expired in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just so we'd have clarity on these uh turnovers, we did, three members appointed by mayor and council will serve until January twenty twenty-five, which will be the three that are are gonna run out then anyway, two uh would be appointed to serve until January twenty-six, and two would be appointed to serve until January twenty-seven, with the eighth being the DDA member, which is always on there, and they appoint their own, so if y'all are good with that.
Okay.
And it would clear up the HPC?
I think what we'd have to do on that is we'd have to go to the HPC and ask them who they would want to represent them on that board.
They have a meeting in October.
So you would be appointing HPC tonight?
And their ex officio.
Right, ex officio anyway.
We appoint that?
They appoint that, but it's ex officio, they don't.
But I think, but that, but because it's a city body, I think the council has to approve it.
Gotcha, they'll get our names.
Yeah, so they'll give the name to us, yeah. Just like the school board, um we know, cause she said at the meeting that that she's gonna be the one.
All right. You all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think I got this right, um I uh nominate Angela Cobb Kelly um for, these are twenty, uh January twenty-five, Angela Cobb Kelly, Donna Lightfoot, and Susan Farrow for January twenty-five term, then Chad Schumate and Lisa Pearson for January twenty-six, and then Meredith Oliver and Ann Young for January twenty-seven.
So that's the eight.
That would be seven, and then Mike Owens would be eight.
The DDA appoints their own, which I will approve.
But yeah, are we gonna do those in like separately, the ex officios separately?
DDA's not ex officio, though, they do have a.
So do we need to appoint him?
I think he needs to be appointed.
Yeah.
Okay.
DDA.
Then I, Mike.
Just to formalize it, I think you need to be form- to formalize it.
So, so the DDA person is going to be appointed, so, because they're, they get a vote, correct?
Yes.
And then the school board person is.
Ex officio.
Ex officio, and HPC is gonna be ex officio, and we're just gonna agree.
As well as the city manager.
But I think you need to uh recognize it formally, since this is a new board.
Okay.
Okay, so uh also recognize Mike Owens as the DD representative for the Main Street Board.
And he has no expiration, is that right?
The DDA does not.
Okay.
Okay. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. We have our board appointments.
We also have library.
And we need to do the ex officios, need to name the ex officios officially.
But not tonight, right?
Uh you can name the ones that you know are up tonight.
Okay, who are they?
Uh the mayor, myself, and Carrie Willis.
Oh, we need to name those ex officios, gotcha, okay. All right, I make a motion to recognize uh Mayor David Keener, City Manager Eric Taylor, and uh the school representative Carrie Willis to be on the Main Street ex officio members.
Second.
Okay, motion from Nathan, second from Teresa, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, motion passes. Okay, you have the library.
Uh yeah, I'd like to uh make a motion to uh put Mamie Phillips on the library board.
Okay, is that the only vacancy?
That's the only vac- we, there's a Walton County vacancy too.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa, further discussion on this one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, I think that uh completes our regular agenda, we do have a need for an executive session, so we'll go into execu- executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Sure.
Motion from Tyson, second from Nathan, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you folks for attending tonight.